All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our working session. I'm going to call the meeting to order here at five thirty-two. We're going to start with roll call.
Commissioner Beaman.
President.
Commissioner Hodge.
Present.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Yeah.
Commissioner LaBarre. Commissioner Machiaski.
Present.
Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Sanders.
Present.
Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Schink. Thank you. We have a forum.
Thank you. We're going to move into public participation. Before we get to that, I want to recognize that we have our fantastic youth commission here who will be speaking to us. Once we get to our discussion items, but let's move into public participation. So as a reminder here, a working session, you get one minute for public comment. That's largely because working sessions designed to be a presentation for all of us to think about issues that we're working on here. If you would like to give a longer public comment, I welcome you to join us at seven o'clock for a three minute public comment at our board of commissioners meeting where we will also respond. If you're joining us in person, please just approach the podium and you'll have your one minute to speak. You have a you have a nice color coded light system there that'll count you down. Starting at green, it's down to yellow, let you know time is almost up and then you get to red. That means you got to stop. At that point, I will unfortunately have to cut you off. You're joining us via Zoom, you can. Click the raise hand button and then I'll be able to call on you to give you your minute. If you joined us via Zoom by phone, you can hit the star nine button, raise your hand. I'll call on you. You can hit star six to unmute. Anybody in the room like to give public comment? Please come on up.
Hello, I'm Isaac Mack Senior from Skyline High School. I was just doing a little bit of work on my college essays and the topic that I chose was regarding the pollution of the Huron River. Specifically tri bars manufacturers continued pollution of it. And I heard talk about reinstating Michigan's polluter pay law that I know got knocked out. Back a long time ago. And I know there's threats of lawsuits and it's threatening local communities and businesses. So I was just wondering what the Washtenaw County Commission's role is in that and where we are at as. Just just from a. A political level of assessing that entire situation with fight corporate pollution of Michigan's waters. So.
All right. I appreciate your comment. Unfortunately, we don't have commissioner response during this, but it might come up when we're. You know, addressing the youth commission, we'll try to maybe squeeze it in during that time, but thank you for the comment. You can always stick around too to get response during the second meeting at seven o'clock. Who else we got? Anybody else want to come give public comment? Anybody online? Peter, we got anybody online? Nobody online. Okay. People are just excited for our presentation. Oh, we do have somebody online? Nope, we don't. Okay. All right. Well, thank you. We're going to move right into. Report of the county administrator.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. You will hear more about the reaffirmation process later in the meeting. But I wanted to make you aware that the budget policies and priorities framework that we discussed at our our last meeting is moving forward. And it is my expectation that I'll have something for you to react to by the end of this fiscal year. As you know, you all committed to a timeline that included bringing you back full recommendations by the close of the second quarter. I feel like we can meet, we can beat that timeline and I'll have something for you all again to react to by the end of this year. That concludes my report.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move right into report of the Board of Commissioners liaison. Peter, what do you got for us?
I I have a similar report on the budget process. As you all know, last working session, there was a discussion around. A series of potential amendments for this year's budget. As Administrator Dell mentioned, those are being finalized and will be brought back. At the next Board of Commissioners meeting. So the general timeline, just to go over it is tonight, the budget is prepared for first reading. Amendments will be brought as part of the final reading at the November sixteenth meeting. So that is when we will. Meet to discuss all of the finalized materials from our conversation. Two weeks ago. So I just wanted to highlight that timeline. Our goal will be to have those materials ready for you to review ahead of time. For the most part, they're variations of what you discussed based on those conversations. There has been one additional amendment that will be recommended for consideration around family sheltering. Just supporting that work to make sure that they can access a continuum of care match dollars, but we will have more details on all of that. And then just wanted to flag one other thing that one of one of the big conversation topics at our last meeting was the Human Services Transition Program. One of their requests was to make that public so that people could review it ahead of the deliberation on that. It is now public, washna.org four slash B O C. If you scroll to the bottom of the page, you can find that memo now publicly available for people to read and review. So just wanted to let you know that that is now public. And if anybody's asking you questions about. That document we sent to you, it's now on the Board of Commissioners website. So I just wanted to make sure you are all aware of that.
Thank you, Peter. I think we all look forward to looking at that family sheltering amendment when we're able to address that. Okay, we are going to move into our discussion items and now it's time for the youth commission. Come give us an update.
Hello, my name is Ella Kashnoosh Upton. I am from District Six and I've been on the Youth Commission for, this is my third year now. And first, we want to know, or we want to thank the Neutral Zone Corner Health Center and 4H for their partnership and mentorship. For our commission. And I'll start by giving you all a brief. Introduction on what we've done this year and we started the year off in late August and where we hosted an orientation for our new members as we had a lot of seniors leave last year and a lot of. New members on boarded this year. And then in September, in our first official meeting, we went straight into our work and did a. We did an explanation of county government. So everyone has. Overview of what that looks like and what our work will look like involving the county government. And then lastly, in October, we had our county tour where this is our. First year back from COVID where we did it in person and we toured many parts of the county, starting in Ypsilanti, going to Celine and then Manchester to understand. That county and the problems that we have in our county better.
Hello, everyone. Again, I'm Isaac Mack. I am in District Eight. And just wanted to talk about what the Youth Commission's goals are for this year. So again, we just want to engage more youth in the Washtenaw County area and. Base our our actions for the year off of what actually interest lovely people you see behind me and what issues that we find pressing and want to explore further through the work of. The commission and in a process in which we did something like that, a few topics that we were able to. List as things that we wanted to explore further this year were mental health, gun violence and juvenile justice and also racial equity. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Shannon Armstrong. I'm the Youth Commissioner for District Eight. One of the things that I want to address this year on the commission is like addressing gun violence and interpersonal violence at its root. By putting more resources into the community to prevent things like that.
Hi, my name is Elijah Hatchrick K. I use he him pronouns. I'm the Youth Commissioner, the other Youth Commissioner for District Nine. And I've been a member since the task force that worked on establishing and setting up the Youth Commission. And I really wanted to continue coming back to make sure we continue having youth at the seat, having a seat at the table like like we do here. And welcoming new perspectives and really strengthening kind of the structures and communities that the Youth Commission has been building in order to do our work. So yeah, thanks for the opportunity to continue with that.
Hi, I'm Zara Mia. I'm from District Two and this is my second year on the Youth Mission. And I really enjoyed serving on the Youth Mission last year and hearing all the voices and giving youth a voice to our county government. And raising youth issues in Washington County and I hope that we continue to serve the youth in Washington County this year as well.
Hi, I'm Liam Moyer. I'm from District One and. I'd like to sort of say. Thank you for just sort of having this commission. It's very important. It gives, you know, youth a voice, which I think is very important, especially in a county where so many issues. Impact us to sort of have a voice and hopefully we can help you more in this coming year. Inform your sort of policy decisions and things going forward as well, sort of make our own individual progresses. I'd also like to ask you to. See if you can connect with your own, with your own district's youth commissioner so we can get you that information. I don't have it directly on me. I also acknowledge that that has a fair amount on the agency of the Youth Commissioner, which can vary. So do like, please try to connect with that and also depending on what your situation with this November, if you're going to be a commissioner. And also, we would like to sort of establish a meeting greet in winter after sort of election stuff has cooled off in order to. In order to sort of meet and make sure everybody's sort of on the same page going forward. Thank you.
All right, good. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tamaris David Jr. I'm from District Eight. I'm a senior at Washington International Middle Academy and High School. I've been on the commission for two years. And originally I joined the commission because, you know, it's a social justice commission. We handle social justice issues. We're trying to make that connection with several youths from across Washtenaw County. That was my original reason for joining. That still remain remains my reason for joining, but I'm a second piece, you know, has happened in that. I've been reaching out to, you know, youth, not only in my district, but in other districts, so that they know that this is an opportunity they can obtain. There are opportunities out there. Something that I've really learned that is really important. There's a lot of youth in our county. They don't know that these opportunities are available for them. They want to get involved. They just don't know how to get involved and that's something that I've really been stressing up since my time with the commission. I'm the chair of the commission, but you know, just being the chair, I can't do it all by myself and all alone. I work with each and every one of these commissioners, you know, they work alongside me with me to get things done. So again, I'm just grateful to have this opportunity, you know, you guys made this possible. As was said, you know, we hope you come to our meetings in the future and our upcoming meetings that we have. And again, thank you for this opportunity, you know. I'm grateful. I know they're grateful and I'm looking forward to the work that we can get done.
That everybody, that's everybody. All right. Well, thank you all for being here. It's really been a pleasure to be the commissioner that's assigned to be on the Youth Commission, taking over from Commissioner Morgan. I'm sure you probably want to say some things and maybe other people have questions for their youth commissioners. And maybe answer that question that came up during public comment that we couldn't answer at the time. So I'll open it up. Commissioners, any comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Chair. And yes, absolutely. I am always so excited for anything involving Youth Commission. But always really happy to see youth commissioners here in this room, talking to us, working with us, sharing thoughts on things. To, I think it was Isaac's point on polluter pay. We. We've, we've taken a lot of action advocating for polluter pay here at this board, but unfortunately our ability to sort of force it is somewhat limited. However, we have been working really hard on the Gelman Act, same plume and trying to force action on that. That that issue in Washtenaw County. Polluter pay can be dramatically impacted at the state level. So certainly. Let's see. Certainly Lansing can can make that change and it would certainly, it'd be a big priority for me going forward. Working with the county, working with youth commissioners, because it is a policy that. It was changed unfortunately a number of years ago and. I just don't see any valid reason to not have polluter pay laws on the books other than supporting polluters. So. For those who don't support changing polluter pay, I would, I would suspect that's where they are. But the Youth Commission has done just incredible work over the last few years and it just seems like it, it gets better and better. Seeing the new leaders coming up in our community throughout our county. Certainly, you know, Elijah, who's been there since the very beginning. And sticking with it, I suspect, is this your last year, Elijah? So we'll, we'll, we'll have new folks coming into Elijah's spot, but I just want to thank you all for continuing to make this group successful. And connecting with this board. I think there's a lot of continued potential with the Youth Commission. So, thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Schink, go ahead.
Thank you. I have a lot of time, so I'll keep it short. Thank you for coming today and talking to us and I look forward to hearing more about what you've been working on. Because it is important for us to hear you and and hear what what you recommend because. Like you said, a lot of the decisions that we make do impact youth. It's important that your voice is heard before we make those decisions. So thank you very much for your work. And for being part of the community building process because that is also incredibly important. And in terms of, you asked about that, you already mentioned the pollution and the polluter pay. I've also worked hard. For many years, I was on the Huron River Watershed Council Board and worked hard to try to to get stronger laws, right? And we need the legislature to act and that's one of the reasons that this election is so, so important. Because there is no good reason why a company should be allowed to protect or to, I'm sorry, to pollute an entire city's drinking water. And get away with it. And, you know, like with the Gelman Act, same plume, forty years and and we've been in court, we've spent millions of. And, and we've been in court, we've spent millions of dollars. And it's still, it's still getting bigger, not smaller. So we've worked really hard on that and it's been a really, I'll talk a little more about it later in the meeting. It's been really frustrating. Because so much of the governmental system is set up to protect polluters. And so it takes people to be bold and persistent to get those changes to be made, but they're so worth making because there is no reason that we should have these things happening. It's like, if you took your dirty clothes, you know, right? But it's like, if you took all your, your dirty clothes and you just threw them all over your neighborhood and said someone else can clean it up. I mean, it's just not okay. So thank you for your interest and I hope, you know, I hope if you're interested in environmental protection, that you'll, you'll work on that because it's something that's always going to need strong advocates. Thank you.
Anybody else? Do, oh, Commissioner Bevan.
I'll keep it short. I just also wanted to say thank you for coming out. We love having your perspective and, and learning from you. So thank you. I know you have so many things else that you can be doing and are focusing on between school and sports and college apps and all of these other life-changing things. So we really appreciate the time that you take to us. And to share your insights and your work, because this is true work with us. So thank you.
All right, last call. Commissioner Jefferson.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to say thank you. You guys have done a lot at the age that you are. It's a, it's a impression on me that we have interest in youth and our youth have interest in what we do that can affect your lives. So your voices are going to be real important to us. And all that you have done to build this youth commission up to where it is now, come a long way. And I thank you for doing the business of loving your, your city, your county and your state. Thank you.
All right. Do any of the adults on the team want to say anything that work on Youth Commission? Yeah, no, no. Oh, you're just waving? Okay. All right. Well, thank you all for the incredible work. I, every time we have a meeting, when we do our liaison reports, I talk back to the rest of the team about what you focused on during those meetings. As I've mentioned to the other Commissioners here, that it's a, sometimes a chat, those meetings can be a challenge because they're Saturday afternoon. And I know that's a challenge for all of you too, because you have school and many other responsibilities beyond school and all the other things that go along with that. And you still take significant time out of your weekend, your very limited weekend to do the work to support the county. So I'm very grateful for that. With that, we're going to move on to opioid discussion. We've been waiting for this one. If Youth Commission wants to stick around and see the rest of the business, it might be interesting. Sorry, go ahead.
No, hi, thank you so much for having us. So is it okay if I share my screen? We have a slideshow to share with you.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Okay. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yep, looks good.
Okay, great. So thank you again for having us. And I just want to say, you know, we've rescheduled two times and we appreciate your rescheduling and we appreciate being here after the Youth Council. And I would just want to say thanks to Youth Council because I, youth are a passion. And so we appreciate everything that you do. So thank you. So my name is Nicole Adelman. I'm the Substance Use Services Director at the Community Mental Health Partnership of Southeast Michigan. And I'm here in partnership with two of my colleagues who I know you know, but will introduce themselves, I'm sure.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good to be with you. He-Manna Lovepluck, Health Officer with the Washtenaw County.
Good evening, Commissioners. Commissioner Shink, you and I have got something in common right now in that I also have laryngitis and am losing my voice by the minute. So I, all of you know me, Trish Cortez, Executive Director of Washtenaw County Community Mental Health.
And so we're gonna, I'm going to take the lead here, but we're gonna take turns and pass this off between each other. But before we talk specifically about opioid settlement funds, I wanted to give a little bit of history and context around our region, our state and the whole setup of substance use as it's laid out. So I, I'm not sure how many people are familiar with my agency in particular, the Community Mental Health Partnership of Southeast Michigan. A lot of people can confuse us with CMH because that's how our name starts, but we are a very different organization. We work very closely with CMH, obviously. So we are, the Community Mental Health Partnership of Southeast Michigan is what's called a prepaid, prepaid inpatient health plan. We are one of ten in the state. The state is divided in regions, as you can see. We have a four-county region, so Livingston, Lenaway, Washtenaw and Monroe Counties. And we are basically, to just put it at its highest level, the behavioral health carve-out for Medicaid funds. And so any Medicaid funding that comes to our region comes to the PHP for Behavioral Health Services. We delegate pretty much all of that to mental health funding, to the community mental health agencies to provide mental health services. We retain most of the substance use funding at our agency to implement. Within Washtenaw County specifically, we retain that. Within two of our other counties, we delegated to the CMHs. But with Washtenaw, Monroe Counties, we hold we hold the delegated task of oversight of substance use funding that comes to our region. Not just for Medicaid, but also block grant funds. You've heard probably about state opioid response funds, ARPA funds, COVID block grant funds, all those fundings comes through us to delegate for substance use services. So here is some of the work that we do in our, across the state there. We work closely, the substance use directors across the state work closely together. We contract with, within Washtenaw County and again across the region with credential prevention, treatment and recovery providers. I won't read all of these to you because you can read them, but we basically provide oversight for substance use services funding in our county, in our region. And so I say all this so that you're familiar with the fact that there is a sub-state governmental agency that over, has oversight over substance use funding that comes to, to our county. And I will say, I'm sure you're familiar, Commissioner Jefferson is on our Oversight Policy Board and we appreciate all the work that Commissioner Jefferson does with us. And so again, we work closely with the, with the existing programs that we fund. There are, there are substance use programs in our county that aren't funded by us. So we don't fund every program in the county. But the, but the programs that we do fund, we do provide a great deal of oversight over those funds. So now just a real overview, high level about opioids, just so everyone knows. I mean, I think sometimes when people hear opioids, they automatically go to heroin and injection drug users. And we just want to clarify that this is really a broader issue than that. So we're talking about heroin, we're talking about fentanyl, we're talking about prescription opioids. And, and how all of that impacts our community. And, and there has been clearly an opioid epidemic. I won't get into the details of that, but that's what's leading into the conversation that we're having. So the state has come out with a statewide opioid strategy. There have been webinars and there are links at the end of this presentation, which can lead you to all the recorded webinars and each one outlines this opioid strategy. But this is what the state is committed to doing with the opioid funds. Across, you know, state opioid funds, the opioid settlement funds, but really to use funds to help impact what opioids have done to our community. And that, that is a range of services from prevention to treatment to harm reduction to criminal justice involvement, to pregnant and parenting individuals, data, making sure we have data and, and of course, addressing health equity. And we'll talk about health equity a lot more as, as we move forward. There is also, I should back up one second just to say there is a new opioid advisory committee or commission that has been created by the governor. And so that has been just recently put into place. And so I'm sure we'll be hearing more from them soon. And there is a website that we can link you to that would give you information on upcoming developments from that commission. And so now I'm going to turn it over to Trish to talk about Washtenaw CMH's role in all of this.
Great, thank you, Nicole. So we at CMH here, we are not a core provider or a primary provider of sub-abuse services. What we do do is provide co-occurring treatment for those that have a co-occurring disorder, meaning that they primarily are in our service because of a mental illness or an intellectual development disability. And usually have substance use as a secondary diagnosis. So we, when I say that we provide services, they're more of the lower level SUD services, like group therapy, counseling, et cetera. We do not provide kind of the deeper end level of service such as detox, residential, et cetera. All that being said, in our, with the, our adult populations that are diagnosed with a, a mental illness, one in two of those individuals have a co-occurring disorder. So we do do, you know, a lot of that kind of treatment for our populations. Our crisis team responds to law enforcement, community calls. I mean, you name it, they're calling these days and, and we always respond. So our crisis team, you know, obviously, a lot of our clinicians do carry Narcan, et cetera. And respond to calls where there might be an SUD, you know, situation going on and they respond. In addition to emergency room response, you know, et cetera, was as we get calls from, from there as well. So our crisis team is doing quite a bit of that. As Nicole mentioned, so at CMH, we are not, we do not govern the SUD system here in Washtenaw County. We, we are not a funder of the SUD system here in Washtenaw County. However, because we have a lot of individuals with a co-occurring disorder and a lot of interaction, we do participate in all of the local task forces committees, et cetera. As participants, participants and influencers. So we are very active in that role. One of the exciting and newest additions to our role in all, in, in SUD services is that as of, you know, October, we both, the, through a lot of the work that Nicole and the PHP have done around, you know, getting feedback from our community about what changes or what they would like to see with the SUD system. In addition to a lot of the town halls and information gathering that we did around uses of the village. What we heard loud and clear in all these efforts is that people really wanted a single place, a single point of entry to inquire around services. So as of October, we moved from having individuals in Washtenaw County call the, what was at the time, the core providers, to actually calling our, our phone line, which is the same as our line for inquiry around mental health services, crisis services, et cetera. So that has been going very well. And I think it's been a, you know, very, very positive for our community. Our phone lines are, our phone volume is increasing with every month. And, and you know, just for like, just, just as an example, just in September, we answered just south of 10,000 phone calls to our 544-3050 number. Of those, about 500 of them were, were calling to inquire around SUD services. And as we've been doing more and more PR work around the village and getting our number out there, we do also include that it's not just for services for mental illness, but also for sub-abuse and behavioral, behavioral health issues on the whole. So that's a newer role for us, but one that we're really excited about.
Thanks, Trish. And now I'll turn it over to He-Manna.
Thanks, Nicole. So in terms of the Washtenaw County Health Department role, there are some main areas that we focus on when it comes to opioid overdoses and substance use disorders. The first, of course, is around our role in surveillance and data reporting. And so for many years now, we have, through our epidemiology team, provided data to the community and done surveillance, particularly around opioid and other drug poisoning deaths. We get data from the state. We get data from emergency departments in our health systems. And we get data from our medical examiner that we all kind of use to analyze and look at not only number of overdose deaths, but what are the, what are the drugs that are being used that contribute to those deaths? What are the trends that we're seeing, both in terms of increases or decreases and also demographics, populations most impacted? So that is something that the Health Department has been doing for many years. We have all of that data available on our website and we do have the most recent opioid report that I'll talk about a little bit in a minute that we just put together and released in September. So just looking at very recent data. We also, of course, have a major role in public awareness and education. We got a big boost in this area in 2018 when we had our first CDC Public Health Associate join the Health Department specifically to focus on opioid use and prevention. And so under, under her guidance and with other staff and working in conjunction with actually Nicole and the Community Mental Health Partnership of Southeast Michigan that funded the campaign. We developed a specific campaign that is really focusing on sharing stories of recovery and helping to provide information and resources to prevent deaths due to opioid use. And the campaign is called It Is Possible. And all of the material is available on our website. Unfortunately, the campaign, which was a multi-county campaign, we worked with all of the counties that Nicole mentioned in the PIHP region to develop the campaign and disseminate the campaign. Unfortunately, it came right at the time when we were starting to deal with COVID and, and so I think we weren't able to disseminate it as, as we had originally planned, but certainly a lot of work was put into that and we hope to be able to revisit that and revamp the, the campaign. In addition, we, we share information, whether it's from our opioid reports or whether it's from our campaign with media. And so really making sure that we are keeping media updated with releases like we did just recently with the September opioid report. But also in our public health role, making sure that if we are seeing a dramatic rise in opioid overdose deaths or we're seeing a dramatic trend in drug poisonings, we not only get that information from the state, but that we share that with the public and with providers and other stakeholders. So really kind of having almost that emergency response role as well. And of course, we share resources. So whether that's through our, our website, whether it's through other communications that we're providing, as well as, as we're providing services in the community, making sure that people know how to access both substance use disorder services and opioid overdose prevention resources like naloxone. And then of course, similar to community mental health, we have a role in working with various groups in the community, collaborating. A great example of that is the opioid project of the Washtenaw Health Initiative that we've been involved with for many years. Next slide, Nicole. Thank you. So I just wanted to share a little bit about what information we included in our overdose, opioid overdose report that was released in September, just to give you a sense of what we're seeing. This was the first report for many months. Due to COVID, they were, we were not able to prepare these and review the data as often. But there are some important things that I would certainly want to highlight and many of you, I'm sure, have already seen this report. But overall, what we saw in Washtenaw County is that the number of residents who died of an opioid overdose increased by 28% between 2020 and 2021. And you see that reflected in the bar chart on this slide, which actually shows you the numbers from 2016 to 2021. And what is particularly important to note here is that this increase is after opioid-related deaths in Washtenaw County decreased by 26% between 2018 and 2019. And remained actually stable during the first year of the pandemic, despite significant increases nationally during this time period. So we saw a decrease, we saw
So we saw a decrease, we saw a sort of stable numbers during the first year of the pandemic and now recently starting, um, between 2020 and 2021, seeing this increase. So 82% of our overdose deaths, um, involve fentanyl, um, which Nicole mentioned. But it's also important to note that the majority, 65% of deaths, involve the use of multiple substances. And oftentimes those being stimulants like cocaine and methamphetamine. Um, when we look at demographic, while we see that most residents who died of an opioid overdose were white, male, between the ages of 25 to 44, we see a disproportionate number of black or African American residents who die from an opioid overdose, um, compared to, um, the level of population, um, in our county. So those are some of the things that we highlighted in the opioid overdose report and some of the things that we're seeing in terms of, uh, recent data related to, um, opioid overdose deaths. And again, this is information that we share widely because we want that information to help inform decisions, um, in this, in this area.
Thanks, Himana. Okay. So now to dive a little bit deeper into the actual opioid settlement funds. Um, I imagine you're all aware of, um, I don't know how much detail you're aware of, but, and I won't read again the whole slide, but just in sum, Michigan is, is expecting to receive nearly $800 million in this opioid settlement funds over 18 years. So it is a longstanding settlement that's gonna, um, potentially provide some sustainability for funding across a long period of time to allow for some impact to, um, be put back into our communities as a result of, um, what happened with opioids through the settlement. Wasna County alone is expected to receive just over $450,000 per year for 18 years. Um, and then what we wanted to share with you too is that, you know, not every municipality in the state is receiving this funds. There are many municipalities in Wasna County who are receiving this funds. Wasna County is receiving by far the largest amount, although $450,000 a year doesn't go very far, as you know. Um, there is, uh, for example, Wasna, or Ann Arbor is expected to receive a total of about $827,000 over the 18 years. Um, Ipsilani is expected to receive about $160,000, so not a lot. Um, so one of our thoughts, um, in presenting this information to you is to think about the concept of potentially working together as a county to pool resources so that we aren't working in a separate, in a siloed way when there's, you know, such limited funds to go around to potentially pull these funds together. If that's something that, um, we feel like we want to talk more about after this, um, you know, when we have a discussion, we would love to, to discuss that more with you. If that's something that you feel you would be interested in pursuing. Um, so there are requirements and I did, uh, reach out to the Board of Commissioners a couple of times with some information. I'm not sure if everyone saw it. But there are, and this is all available online. I can, um, hopefully the resources at the end point you in this direction. But there are, um, specific ways that these funds must be used. So there are specific people who, um, it can be used for specific programs that it can address and, um, specific settings where it can be applied. And again, I won't read all of these to you, but some of the focuses are pregnant and postpartum individuals and their families, people in treatment and recovery for opioid use disorder, because clearly this is an opioid settlement fund. So we want to be able to use these funds to give back to the community for the impact that they've had in the community. First responders is another group who can be addressed. Um, it can be used to, to support naloxone, training and supplies, medication assisted treatment, prevention programs, syringe service programs, data collection. A lot of different services are eligible to be used for these funds. Um, and then also where they can be used is really very broadly, you know, between treatment, prevention and recovery support services. They can be used across a range of, um, locations and providers. So there was a survey done, um, in 2021, 2022, um, and I, this was the chart survey, correct Himana? So this was, uh, done by, um, uh, one of our local community organizations, the Center for Healthcare Research and Transformation. I hope I get that right. Okay. Um, and so this is the statewide, these are the statewide results. Um, so all regions participated and had represented, representation from, um, all of our constituents. I think something that's interesting to know is that, um, about a third of the people who responded reported having lived experience with substance use. Interestingly, half of those, um, reported being in recovery. So I think it's very important to note that about half of those people that responded and reported having lived experience were active, were considering themselves active users. So I think that's a really important point to, to highlight. Um, there was a large majority of, uh, Caucasian or white individuals who identified 80% um, uh, represented in the survey. And of the top priorities across the state, um, people said they wanted to support recovery support services, which includes things like peers who are people in recovery, supporting other people through their recovery process, what we call recovery community organizations, which are local organizations that support, you know, recovery based events, um, and support peers and support outreach to people. Um, prevention programming was the second. Um, and then the third is accessing, um, expanding access to medications to treat opioid use disorder, which is also known as M O U D and other opioid related treatment. But we also wanted you to see specific information, um, for our region. So not just, we don't like, we don't want you to think, I mean, we want you to know what the state is thinking, of course, but we want you to think more locally about what was said for our region. And so the results that came out of our region were really focused on, um, prevention programming specific to, uh, medical providers and first responders, treatment and recovery support services. So again, that's a very broad topic of, um, treatment, which includes substance, uh, substance use treatment in general, but also opioid use disorder treatment, recovery support services, including peers and recovery housing. Oh, that's another recovery support service I forgot to mention, recovery housing, so that people can have a, a place to live with other people in recovery while they're, you know, just out, usually just out of residential services. Harm reduction activities is another, um, big, uh, place where people in our region felt like funding should be focused. So this includes syringe service programs, which are also, um, known as needle exchange programs previously, but they're now called syringe service programs, expansion of those programs, along with criminal and legal diversion for people who are, um, you, actively using. And then the final category is co-occurring services. So like Trish was mentioning, people with both mental health and substance use disorders, um, co-occurring. And then also underserved communities, which we really want to highlight, um, when we talk about this funding. Um, and, and part of what we want to talk about is the fact that, uh, all of the funding that we provide across our region, we're really currently starting to address these issues and work with our existing providers who are currently funded to address health disparities and to address underserved communities. And so that's a big highlight that we want to really call out attention to, um, because we find, we know that it's an important focus and we know that it needs to continue and that we wanted to call it out for the potential use for opioid settlement funds. And I think the other piece that we wanted to talk about here on this slide is that, um, C M H P S M has a procurement process, a competitive procurement process where we overall, um, we work with providers and agencies across our region to, to, um, competitively procure these funds so that we are supporting existing programs that provide, um, evidence-based interventions, so prevention, harm reduction, treatment programs. Um, and so a competitive procurement process happened in 2021 and 20, and it carried, it was a two-year process. And then we are using 2023 as a carry forward year because we have come across funding cuts. And so I think it's really important to talk about the fact that the state has had to cut funds. And so we in turn have had to cut programs and we are hoping to think about opioid settlement funds in ways that can support programs that we already know are existing, that we already know work and that have potentially had to receive cuts through, um, through our existing funds. And we see these funds as a real, again, I mentioned this at the beginning, source of sustainability. 18 years is a long time, so we, we hope to, um, look at those funds in that way. And then, um, finally, we really wanted to talk again about the focus on health disparities. Himana talked about that a lot in her, in the report that she presented, but, um, people are impacted, as we know, by their environment, by where they are born, where they live, where they, um, learn, work and play, and that it all impacts their outcomes. And so we are work, their health outcomes. And so we are working with all of our providers that are funded through us for substance use treatment, prevention and harm reduction and, and services all along the spectrum to address health disparities and ensure that, that, um, this is addressed in the future. And we want that, we, we wanted to highlight that as an important aspect of how we hope you will consider thinking about opioid settlement funds. And so just this, you had the slideshow, I believe, already. And if you don't, you will have it before you leave, but here are a lot of, um, local resources for you. There were webinars on all of these topics by the state. So they did a presentation on specifically related to opioid settlement funds, on harm reduction programs, treatment, prevention, recovery, um, opioids in general and the opioid settlement in general. And so those resources are all available for you to watch if you want more information. And then, of course, we're here to answer any questions you have today, but you have our contact information if you have any questions following this, um, and you want to follow up with us. So I'm gonna stop sharing now and then, um, just open up for questions. We're here to answer anything that, any questions that you might have, any suggestions that you might have. But we really appreciate your time to talk about opioid settlement funds. This is something that we obviously are very passionate about. We want as a, as an agency, as the Community Mental Health Partnership of Southeast Michigan, we are set up to distribute and monitor and, um, provide these services. And we want to support the county in any way possible in distributing these funds in an appropriate way. So any questions you have for any of us, I would open the, you know, open up and say thank you for giving us this time to present to you.
Well, thank you, uh, all three of you for coordinating your schedules and making this possible. I know it takes a little while to, to get here, so we're really grateful for your time. I know there's a lot of excitement around this one. I know Commissioner Jefferson, you were particularly excited for this presentation. So I know we'll have some questions from people. Who wants to go first? Commissioner Morgan.
Um, yeah, a quick question, um, really thinking through, um, what does the path look like for someone seeking help or support? Are there only certain folks that we can serve being through C M H? Or is it open to anyone? I'm particularly thinking, you know, somebody does need treatment, doesn't know where to go, but isn't necessarily, necessarily involved in the, the criminal justice system. Um, what does that look like? What might that path look like for them?
For anyone, not specific to opioid settlement funds, just in general. So as Trish men- mentioned, we changed our process pretty recently. Um, so it used to be that people had to call a specific provider to get support. But right now, if someone has Medicaid or is uninsured or just doesn't know how to access services, they would call the C M H five four four thirty fifty line and they, um, will be supported. So if they have private insurance, they'll be supported in calling their private insurance company. If they have Medicaid or are uninsured, um, they will get support in, uh, finding out what their needs are. There, they will receive an immediate on the phone screening to find out what their needs are, what level of care services they might need. And then they are automatically connected with the substance use services treatment provider, if that's what is determined to be medically necessary. And if that's what the person wants, they have to want to do the service to, in order for them to, for there to be a referral, of course. Does that answer your question?
I think so, yeah. So do we, and, and this is why I'm trying to think through the connection with the opioid settlement funds and thinking through what would, what will those funds allow us to do if anything that is different or, uh, expanding upon what we can do currently?
Um, in terms of access, I mean, I think we could think about it in terms of access. I think we do, we have a lot of programs that people could access that are in addition to treatment. So we could use these funds to support existing treatment programs. We could use these funds to support programs that are outside of traditional treatment services. So for example, we have, just as an example, across the state, there has been a push to create what we know as engagement centers. Um, and so we have one in our county, um, run by Home and New Vision. And that is for people who are actively using, so they may not, may not be ready for treatment. They may go to the engagement center and realize they're ready for treatment and be facilitated to call the access line, um, and access treatment when they're ready. That's one example of a program that did receive a funding cut, um, this year. And we do want to be able to see programs like that also be sustainable, um, in our county, uh, in the long term. So if we keep, if we continue to receive funding cuts, which, you know, is somewhat expected, we can't support these programs forever. And so opioid settlement funds could be a sustainable source of funding for programs like that. Another program, for example, would be a syringe access program, which is, it has limited places to receive funding, right? So there are no federal state funds that are allowed to be used to purchase syringes, for example. Opioid settlement funds are allowed to be used for syringe access programs. So those are just two examples of ways that, um, could expand services that are available to people.
Thank you. That's helpful to me. I think my, my primary interest would be in seeing what we can do to provide direct treatment for folks. Uh, it seems like that is, is something that is, um, expensive if not assisted with, um, from what I understand. Thanks. Thanks, Jeff.
All right, Commissioner Shink.
Thank you. Sorry, yes. Uh, I saw the cough suppression in there and I thought, no, I'm not gonna take any opioids. Um, I, I, I listened carefully and I, I guess one thing that I'm still left wondering is, do we have adequate supportive housing in our county for people? I met somebody in a different county, in Jackson County, who was living in a tent in her, um, in her mother-in-law's backyard with her husband. And, um, the father-in-law was abusive, but the, the couple didn't have a place to go other than the tent. They were both addicts. Um, she told me she had been to a rehab 20 times. And she wants to recover, but she needs, she needs help more than she can get on a consistent basis. Obviously, I'm, I'm talking about a different county. This isn't our county. But it, it really struck me, the, the difficulty of expecting somebody to be able to recover when they know they need supportive housing, they know that they can't do it alone. And they really need, they, they need so much handholding to get through this process and, and it just isn't there for them. What, you know, like, what is the prognosis for that person? And she was delightful. She was a wonderful person. So, um, I just wonder if, and I know obviously the, the opioid settlement's not enough to provide, uh, supportive housing, then probably I could imagine it costing the amount that we're gonna get a year to, to do, you know, for, for a few people. But, um, if you could talk a little more about that and, um, you may or may not know, I'm running for state senate and I'm not campaigning, but I do want to know, like, what could the state do better to support people like that, to people who are really struggling? Thank you.
Um, I appreciate your question and particularly as a former executive director of a family emergency shelter. So I was formerly the director of Alpha House. So I, I hear your concerns for people who don't have adequate affordable housing. So thank you for that question. And we do, we work really closely with Avalon Housing, which is, uh, as you know, a permanent supportive housing provider. We fund them, um, to do primary care integration. So they house people, as you know, probably, and if people don't know, they house people who are potentially actively using, who have been homeless, who have a substance use disorder, um, and work with them on sustaining that housing. And so we help fund that process. They also have a harm reduction program to help people who are actively using reduce their harm and to keep them housed. And so, you know, this funding could also be used to support Avalon Housing, um, in conjunction with substance use disorder services. They do provide substance use treatment services. We don't directly fund those substance use treatment services, but they do provide them. Um, so I appreciate that question and I think there are a lot of people out there who need housing. You, you can't be in recovery housing if you're not in recovery, obviously. So that's a, that's a significant burden. Um, and we also, another, another category that we talked about are recovery community organizations and recovery support services. So we really are starting to rely more and more on peers who are people in recovery to work with people who are in active, um, active use, to try to help them get through the process and to try to connect them with services, whatever those services might be. And if anyone wants to, Trish or Himana, if you want to add to that, please feel free. Or if that, if that answered your question. I mean, I think the state could do a lot to fund affordable housing a lot more, you know, altogether. Wasna County, as we all know, is a very hard county to live in in terms of affordability. Washtenaw County, as we all know, is a very hard county to live in in terms of affordability.
Yeah, yeah, Commissioner, I think, Shink, I think definitely more funding towards supportive housing, whether whether it's on the mental health funding stream or the certainly the sub abuse stream. We're really lucky here in Washtenaw that although the village isn't able to solve the affordable housing problem, which is probably, you know, for individuals that are that are are camping in Washtenaw County because they're homeless, it is that affordable housing is 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 really the big problem. Because between a combination of Medicaid and we have actually invested quite a bit out of village dollars to do supportive housing, you know, regardless of it's just whether it's people with mental illness or sub abuse. So we're really fortunate, but that definitely also demonstrates the need that we are very unique here in Washtenaw County that we have, we're that we that we have voters that actually pass that village. Um, so I mean, you definitely advocating um when you are going to be uh in in the legislature for, you know, for uh additional funding around supportive housing is is key in addition to affordable housing here locally.
I just want to add that I think um the state has, over the years, uh made more of uh more progress in really embracing harm reduction um approaches. And I think that um as Nicole shared in one of the slides, when that survey was done, you know, in our region, harm reduction was one of the areas that was identified as a priority. And I think that that approach um is something that is cross cutting. So harm reduction can impact access to housing and it can impact access to treatment as well as overall um, you know, health of of um someone who's using. So um so I think it's really important to really think about harm reduction, not just related to perhaps uh distribution of Narcan or syringe services, but really thinking about it as a much broader approach to the whole umbrella of um substance use disorder services and um and and meeting needs of people who are um using and in recovery.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Hymena. I would absolutely see housing as a harm reduction strategy. I mean, if you any any reduction of harm to someone using substances, if that if I'm housed and I'm using, I'm at much less uh risk of harm. So I completely agree.
So another question I have is, um, I was able to pick up a box of Narcan at at an event, and so I carry it with me. I know that the sheriff's office has Narcan in a vending machine. Do you think it's advisable to have more of these sort of vending machines around the county so people have easier access to Narcan?
Absolutely. We actually just received funding, additional COVID block grant funding from the state. And some of that is being allocated to additional vending machines um in our county and across the region. And and I and I, we also try to make it known that um people can get Narcan from us. Um, if there's a state portal, there are lots of resources where people can get free naloxone. And we, it's our goal to get it into the hands of anyone who needs it.
And I fully also agree agree with that. We just uh fairly recently also have a vending machine at in our at our uh Ypsilanti site at Towner um and are working on getting another at our downtown Ann Arbor site at the annex. So yes, I think it is absolutely um a great strategy.
Well, thank you. I want to thank you for your work and I want to thank you for also your work to reduce the stigma around opioid addiction. Obviously, the the settlement makes it very clear that there were corporate actors engaged in in a very specific and intentional effort to get people addicted to this deadly substance. And I have lost two adult cousins in the last five years to opioid addiction. And it's just, it's heartbreaking, you know, the the family cost, um the the sadness, the grief that will will never go away, the guilt of the the closer family members for not being for not being able to do what what they couldn't do. And I just want to let you know that I really appreciate your work and um thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Jefferson.
Thank you, Chair. I um appreciate the uh presentation coming here. Uh, the commissioners are uh set to make the decisions on what uh they hear from you three and from those who are in the community about what is important as far as, you know, reducing not only opioid overdoses, but reducing use overall uh and having more availability for treatment and for overdose aftercare, things like that. I mean, the uh closing of the uh Engagement House was pretty tough on the community. And that was a place where you can make a phone call. And that person who was in trouble would talk to those at the Engagement House. And they would uh allow them to come there uh for three or four days and be assessed and figure out whether they were desiring to go to treatment or not, because you can't make a person go. But most of the time, they're, they will go. Uh, several people have uh gone through that with my help and others that I know. So yeah, this these dollars would be good for engagement. But also, I'm trying to understand the outline uh uh housing of those who are using and those who are in treatment. Uh, when you spoke about it, Nicole, um you said that this is something that Avalon does and it's something that's separate from the uh CMHP. But is is this something that is a qualification if they go to Avalon Housing as a recovering person uh and they continue to relapse? Is that something that uh will allow them to be uh, you know, removed from the premises or or will they still be able to stay?
Um, it's my understanding, and I don't know all of the rules of all the Avalon properties, but they work with their consumers as much as possible to keep them housed. I know that that's their ultimate goal. So I would imagine that if somebody is caught using, that would not lead to an immediate eviction. Um, I, like I said, they have um certified licensed staff who can work with people with substance use disorder. And I know that they work with them as as a harm reduction strategy. Let's keep you housed. Let's get you services. Let's help you. Um, if that means get you getting you into treatment, that's great. If that makes, if that means helping you use less, so you're not disruptive and you don't need to be evicted, that's another another potential. So um we work closely with Avalon um and we support the work that they do. So no, I don't, I I do not believe that that somebody would be evicted just for the sole purpose of use.
Thank you for the information. I wasn't sure of that, but the uh the the ideal of having uh the 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 way that people are, you know, uh dealing with addiction uh is very difficult. And for that to be something that is a requirement, I just needed to know. Because we have, uh, I mean, uh, been in a in a a county where the dollars have been removed and some have been removed from what I had heard in the past because as Commissioner Shink said, someone going to treatment twenty times and not uh catching on to recovery. Uh, I don't know how many of our commissioners understand that there is uh a few ways that you can deal with addiction, and that is, you know, continue to use until oblivion. Uh, you can find recovery or you die. And those things are very hard to take. It's just some people won't get it. So I I just didn't uh I just didn't like the way that the the dollars were removed because if there's only a few that can't make it, but there are some that really need it. Now, as far as the peers go, we're talking about the peer uh uh services within the uh county sheriff's office and the courthouses uh or just in the uh treatment facilities uh or with uh organizations such as uh Home and New Vision, Don Farm.
So we fund peers in different agencies. Um, and and this could be a way that um that the commission decides to fund peers in a certain location. So we're not advocating for a specific location per se at this meeting. Um, we don't, like I said, we don't fund all peer services. We fund peer services at certain agencies. We just can't afford to fund every peer program in the county. Um, but you know, this, that brings up the issue for me that I I wanted to say that I wasn't, I I think I forgot to mention that as a P I H P, while we don't, we're not asking you for these mu- these these funds, we don't, we're not direct service providers. We are here to help you in any way distribute these funds however we can. So if it, if that means, you know, working together in whatever way possible to help get these funds out into the community, we're here to help you do that.
Thank you. The information that you received from uh uh those who who you did surveys that were interested in, you know, certain priorities, to where these dollars can be spent, then if is that data available?
Yes. Yes, we can share that with you. If it's not already part of the slides, which I think you're right, it's not one of the resources, but we can share that that survey with you.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for your coming today. All three of you have really uh taken your time. I appreciate the information and uh continue to work hard uh because this is a, uh, Trish, you had something?
Yeah, Commissioner Jefferson, you you kind of uh uh, you know, spurred something that I wanted to mention that uh to all of you is that um, you know, I think lots of times when we get funding at C, you know, we we kind of automatically want to jump to something new, something, you know, that that exciting. Previous to this presentation being put together, um, really, it was our prosecutor, uh, Ellie Savitt a- actually got together, um, uh, myself, Hymena, Delphia, the public defender, as you all know, um, as well as Judge Kunki, um, to really see, like, should we all kind of get together and think about what we should do with these? You know, what recommendations as um leaders um that we that we should make? And, you know, what what we brought to their attention, that Hymena and I, who work closely with Nicole, is that there's existing programs like the Engagement Center, um, which uh, you know, many, many people know about. I think you referenced that, um, Commissioner Jefferson, as well as peers, as well as that are who that funding is at jeopardy. And when we kind of brought to light, like, wow, well, there might be some, um, you know, some cuts made to the Gate Engagement Center. Judge Kunk said, why refer people there all the time? So I just, you know, and we did share this slide deck with all of those um folks um prior to coming here to, you know, to present to you all tonight. So um, you know, I think it's just important to note that there might be funding things that are are in jeopardy right now, and maybe we can have the flexibility of doing it in a in a in a newer and different way. But I just don't want it to be lost on um any of us that there are things that are in jeopardy right now that necessarily might not be new, but are really desperately needed in this community. So to your point, uh, Commissioner Jefferson of funding, funding losses, we could be experiencing that here in Washtenaw County through some of our existing programming that I think many of us, and I know the three of us recommend, make sure we take a look at those, um, and that they cannot be forgotten.
So one last thing, uh, the uh the marijuana industry has a lot of billboards around Ypsilanti in the area. And what I would say, uh, what can we do to do more uh public advertising? Because just think about it, when you, when you're a user, you see advertisement of where you can purchase things, you'll go to that place. But if you're a user who is tired, sick and tired of using, and you see a billboard that tells you where you can go get help, you may go to that place too. So I'm just just thinking about as far as prevention and and, you know, those type of things. But thank you again for coming.
All right, Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'm gonna be brief because I'm also suffering with something. I don't know. It's not COVID, everyone. I took a test. Um, I don't want to thank you. I'm eager to see what we might do with these ones too. I think that um looking at the services that we have in our county that are are is that are already doing the work and wanting them to be able to continue doing that work is important. I think thinking about affordability and accessibility for treatment is very important as well. I um am the secondary consumer on the community mental health board, and that's primarily because of um issues uh that I have tried to help with my brother, but I will never forget getting a phone call from him saying that he had to, this is not uh opioids, but that he had to stop drinking and he had no idea where to go nor how to afford it. It wasn't an easy job trying to figure out to try to help him get placement in a treatment program. And when uh we finally found a place for him to go, we also had to sign a guarantee that his treatment would be paid for. And he had to have a cosigner for that, and it wasn't cheap. Um, and so I think, thank God, he had us around him that A, could help him find a place to go quickly and B, help him figure out how to afford it. Nobody who wants to go into treatment should be faced with a decision about where do I go and how do I afford it? And if we can help eliminate that problem in this county, we will have gone a long way. Thanks.
All right, anybody else? Commissioner, is that a hand or not a hand? Nope, nope. Okay, my turn. My turn? Sounds like my turn. All right. I got a couple of questions. Uh, it might be kind of early for these. So you mentioned earlier that not every municipality in the county is going to get uh a piece of this from the settlement. Do you have the list of the ones that are? And then the second piece of the question is, you mentioned that there might be, it might make sense for us to try to collaborate with the municipalities that are receiving funding. Do you already have some ideas on how that might look? If not, that's totally cool. We can look, think about that later. But if you have some initial ideas, I'd love to hear them.
Yeah, we, there is actually a list of all municipalities across the state, so we can definitely share that with you. And uh it might, it's as easy as sharing a link, but I can share the document as well. Um, and and I think, you know, it would go a long way. It would probably come more from, better from you to approach potentially these other municipalities and say, do you want to do this together? Um, we're happy, again, to participate in any conversation that needs to be had in that way. But I would just encourage that to be something that the that the commission think about.
So do you have any thoughts about what that, like, for us to think about approaching municipal? Because we run into challenges when we try to, you know, collaborate with municipalities. They want to use funds that they have for their own particular purposes. So if you have anything based in best practice or I think that might make the ask a little easier, we'd love to hear it. If not, that's okay. We can come back to it.
No, sorry, I muted myself instead of unmuting myself. Um, so I think, I think one point to make to these municipalities is that this money, while it seems like a lot, and like I said, Ypsilanti is getting, what, a hundred and sixty thousand over eighteen years, it's it, there's very little money. So to pool the resources really makes it go that much farther. Even eight hundred thousand dollars for Ann Arbor over eighteen years is not a lot of, it doesn't fund much for a year, right? So I think the point to make to them is that it really makes the most sense to pool the resources to make them go the farthest to address the issues across the county. That would be my suggestion.
All right.
If I, yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
No, no, you go ahead, please.
Um, if I could just add, I think the other um important, and and Nicole, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that, you know, when it comes to especially treatment services, um, we are uh, you know, programs do not um have finite boundaries and geographies in terms of who um who they serve. And so I think it's also important to note that for many of the programs, whether they're treatment programs or other kinds of programs like Nicole has mentioned, um, that they are serving, you know, people from all over the county and maybe in some cases even from uh, you know, the broader P I H P region. So I think that's another important thing to remember, that these are not sort of very, you know, geographically limited programs.
All right.
And then I guess the last thing I would add, you know, to what we talked about health disparities. You know, if we see a community like Ypsilanti receiving the least amount of money when they potentially have the most need, that we look at, that we try to support our county as a whole where the need is the greatest.
I assume it's probably similar to American Rescue Plan dollars, where they use a formula based on population. That's how it ended up that way. Yep.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Well, thank you all for the presentation. I expect that we'll be talking a lot more about this over the next eighteen years.
Thank you so much for having us.
Yep. All right, uh, we're gonna move on into liaison reports. Unless people want to hold their liaison report to the next meeting. Uh, nope, Commissioner Shink wants to give it now. Go ahead, Commissioner Shink.
Thank you. Last night I attended the card meeting. That's the coalition. Oh, man, it's long. It's for the remediation of dioxane and it's the Public Engagement Group. And I would just say, you know, there was a lot of confusion still around what happened with the court process. I think everybody here knows that um the lower court decision to implement the fourth CJ without it actually being a consent agreement um was overturned by the Court of Appeals. And so that it seems that the state is being slow in working to get the newer standards to apply to the situation, which nobody understands because they're standards, right? It's not something anybody has to agree to. It's just a standard. And so I'll just say that the um slow-walking, obfuscation, and, um, just general lack of responsiveness continues on the part of the state. And the residents are very, you know, reasonably very upset. And so to me, it just reinforces the importance of having us for the help from EPA. Obviously, we don't know where that's going to go. But at this point, the state is pretty, um, unhelpful and unresponsive, which doesn't mean that it will remain that way. I I always have hope and hope that there's something happening that that I'm not seeing at the card meeting, but just wanted to report to you the the general state of things as I saw them last night. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Nope. No other liaison reports right now. That's okay. We got another chance for that in our next meeting. Uh, we're going to move into items for current and future discussion. Might I have any? No, okay. Uh, no pending items, so I'll look for a motion to adjourn. There's a, all in favor? All right, we're adjourned.
Evening. Uh, you you'll you'll note just very briefly, uh, I am not Sue Schink. I'm Andy LaBarre, the Vice Chair of the Board. Unfortunately, Sue has a laryngitis-related ailment that she referenced previous, so I will chair our meeting tonight and try and, uh, keep us on pace here. And item one, will join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our clerk for the roll call.
Commissioner Beaman.
Present.
Commissioner Hod.
Present.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Here.
Commissioner LaBarre.
Here.
Commissioner Machieski.
Present.
Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Sanders.
Present.
Commissioner Scott.
Here.
Commissioner Schink.
Present.
Thank you. We have a forum.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move now to public participation. This is your opportunity to provide public comment. You have up to three minutes. Please state your name and where you reside. And the yellow button will indicate you have one minute left. The red button will indicate your time is up and I'll have to keep us moving. Anyone wish to give public comment at this time?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lee Meadows. I'm a thirty-year resident of Ann Arbor, Washington County. Retired professor of math at the Walsh College. And I think that some of you know, for those of us who are currently retired, we don't know what that word really means anymore. We know it's refueling. Part of my refueling is the passion that I have to give back to the community. So in that capacity, I currently serve as the Chairman of the Board of Directors for the Ozone House in Ypsilanti. Ozone House is a twenty-four-hour crisis and health center based in Ypsilanti. On any given night, about fifty young people ages ten to twenty-four experiencing housing instability are housed through Ozone House. Seventy percent of the young people Ozone House serves resides in the city of Ypsilanti. Forty percent of the youth served identifies members of the LGBTQ community. We want to thank you for your support you have provided for Ozone House and dozens of other service, social services and nonprofits. We at Ozone House are concerned that December twenty-first, after December thirty-first, funding support for Ozone House Youth Services and other vital human services will be eliminated. While the current county funding is set to run out in less than two months, your support has historically helped services, helped service homeless youth ages ten to twenty-one by funding programs that provide emergency shelter, transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, rapid rehousing, family support services and the, and the youth drop-in center in Ypsilanti. Again, we are grateful for the support you have provided thus far. However, our concern to that with nearly eighty percent of Ozone House clients being black and indigenous or young people of color, plus these essential services will have a disproportionate impact. The services at risk have a high, extremely high rates for successful young people. For example, last year ninety-five percent of ten- to seventeen-year-olds exited shelter to safe and stable housing. And one hundred percent of seventeen- to twenty-one-year-olds increased their life skills to support their transition into adulthood. We are asking you to prioritize these homeless and vulnerable youth at Ozone House through a long-term sustainable funding solution for all of us engaged in providing services that maintain integrity and well-being of the city and the county. I thank you for your time and attention.
Anyone else who wishes to provide public comment?
Good evening. My name is Liz Kolb, and I currently reside in Ann Arbor, Michigan, and I am a teacher by trade. Um, but I am also the Vice President of the Board of Directors of Ozone House. On top of the hundreds of young people housed directly through Ozone House each year, Ozone House also serves several thousand more through its drop-in center, its K- twelve student support partnership with the Washtenaw Intermediate School District, and through its twenty-four-hour crisis hotline. Not all the callers to our crisis line can be best served by Ozone House. A significant portion of the people calling or texting our crisis line have needs that our partner organizations in the community are better able to support. We often get callers who are survivors of domestic violence, who are then referred to our local domestic violence shelter partner. We might refer callers whose entire family is experiencing homelessness to local family shelters via HAWK. We cannot do this work without our community partners. And like Ozone House, these organizations will experience significant cuts in financial support from the county after December thirty-first. This did, this decrease in funding comes at a time when costs for services are skyrocketing due to inflation, the frontline staffing shortages and burnout, uh, continue. And most importantly, vulnerable populations are experiencing COVID compounded crisis at an alarming rate. We are less than two months away from a funding cliff for some of the most vital social service organizations in our community. I am asking you to bridge this funding gap now for homeless youth services, domestic domestic violence services, homeless family services, and other critical human services that support our community's most vulnerable populations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to provide public comment at this time?
Hello, thank you, I'm Tad Weiser, live in Ypsilanti Township. I'm a member of First Congregation of the United Church of Christ that is right on the border of the township and the city. And my faith work leads me to work on racial and social justice issues in my church and as a co-founder of We Rock, the Washtenaw Regional Organizing Coalition. We Rock is a coalition of faith and labor, faith, labor, and community organizations and individuals that builds healthy collective power needed to break down the systems that sustain injustice, racism, and economic inequality. We Rock is also part of a statewide faith-based organization called Moses Action. One of Moses Action's current core goals is to promote increased voter participation among people of color, low-income individuals, and other historically marginalized groups. The core goal is what led both Moses and We Rock to be active in a campaign called Defend Black Voters. In 2020, black, brown, and working-class people across the country showed up at the polls in force. And now we're facing the reaction, a thinly veiled ploy that uses the big lie as an excuse to pass restrictions that make it harder for black, brown, and working-class people to vote. That ploy is called Secure My Vote. This effort could be passed into law by the end of the year and the stakes for these historically marginalized communities could not be higher. I can't sit idly by while there are efforts to silence the voices in my community. Elements of Secure My Vote, like doing away with automatic absentee ballots, would adversely affect seniors in my congregation. Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan, Delta Dental of Michigan, have been using our taxpayer dollars through their contracts with Washtenaw County to bankroll the legislators behind this effort. Vendors doing business with the county should align their own publicly stated positions on racial justice and internal policies on diversity, equity, and inclusion with their political advocacy and spending. At this critical moment, we're asking Commission members to take a bold stand as an important voice in the community to hold these corporations accountable, to protect our civil rights. Thank you for the opportunity to address the Commission on this important matter.
Thank you, Mr. Weiser. Anyone else who wishes to give public comment at this time?
Should have given my name.
Yeah, for those who are doing, your name and the community you reside in here in Washtenaw?
I live in Ypsilanti, Pittsfield Township. The Washtenaw County Commission has had the opportunity to stand for Michigan democracy and confront Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan on their stance as a contributor towards extremist and partisan views toward the election and the people that they backed. They've given since 2015 eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand to lawmakers. And along with Delta Dental, who's given over a quarter of a million to these same people that have suppressed support for racial justice, yet they are backing people that are doing just the opposite. And we think as the Commissioners, we commend you for holding them accountable. And that some of this funding goes toward extremist views that actually contradict what we believe Blue Cross and Delta Dental stand for in the community. Their message seems to be, we can do one thing and then turn around behind the people's back, do something else that's actually just juxtaposed against the good nature that we all thought that Blue Cross Blue Shield had toward the community. To me, that's disrespectful and I think we should at least challenge them and their continuance as proprietors of our coverage to change their stance and come clean on these issues that affect the people in Washtenaw County. Thank you.
Sir, forgive me, just for the record, could we get your name as well to include it in the minutes?
John Hollingsworth.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else who wishes to provide public comment at this time? Andrew and Peter, do we have anyone in the online queue there?
We do, Monica Ross Williams.
Hey, can I be heard? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes we can.
Monica Ross Williams, twenty-one fifty Chevrolet, Ypsilanti Township, Michigan. I just wanted to read part of the statute as it relates to criminal sexual conduct to the second degree felony. It is about Section 520, a person who is guilty of criminal sexual conduct in a second degree if the person engages with sexual contact with another person and if any other following circumstances exist, basically that the person's under age thirteen. But I want to skip down to Section F. The actor causes personal injury to the victim and force or coercion is used to accomplish sexual contact. Force or coercion includes but is not limited to any other circumstances in Section 520B one F. The actor causes personal injury to the victim and the actor knows or has a reason to know that the victim is mentally incapable, mentally incapacitated, or physically helpless. Now, if I haven't correct this board, and I used to be a correction officer for five and a half years, so I really kind of look at people who commit CIC in the second degree as the lowest of the earth. So basically, this board basically, and this body gave one point two million dollars to an organization that one of the predators did as criminal sexual conduct of a child under the age of thirteen. Now next, the board basically also basically gave one point two million dollars, or at least allocated, so make sure we have it correct on the record because it said that the money hasn't been given yet, to someone that committed a murder, basically of a person that was twenty-four, EMU student, because his hands was tied behind his back and he was shot, executioned, stabbed out in the head three times. Now, this board and body is also basically saying at this point in time that there's nothing wrong with that, that in Washtenaw County, basically, this is now our county and we can go and spend taxpayers' money in order to support this. I'm hearing that this organization has saved lives. Well, the life that was taken from the twenty-four-year-old student in nineteen seventy-five, I don't think his life has been saved. And I don't really honestly equally think that the child who was molested has been saved. I literally hope that there is a straight FBI investigation in regards to what has happened with our money and our tax dollars inside of the Washtenaw County. This is a tragedy, it is an abomination, and it literally needs to be investigated. And furthermore, I know I only have a couple of minutes left. I'm also hearing inside of these articles that this may have something to do with elections. If that's the case, then it is caught Rico. And I seriously do hope that there is a deep investigation of this body that gave the money also to who approved the money, and also basically with the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department that have enabled felons and criminals to be a part of our Sheriff's Department. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else in the online queue? Forgive me, I can't see it on the screen here. One last chance for any in-person participation, any public comment.
My name's Ian Robinson, I'm a resident of Ann Arbor and President of Huron Valley Area Labor Federation. And I'm speaking tonight in favor of the resolution to ensure accountability of county vendors funding voter suppression. We discussed this issue on Huron Valley Area Labor Federation Delegate Body months ago and agreed unanimously to support the organizations that have been pursuing these companies that I think have crossed a fundamental line. I mean, I, you know, companies have always supported both parties. Companies often lean in the direction of Republican Party in terms of the bulk of their funding. That's not something that would set off alarm bells, but when they are actually funding politicians who are either election deniers or lay claim to completely unsubstantiated claims that there's voter fraud on a significant scale that the policies that they introduce are supposed to be addressing, when in fact, there's no evidence whatsoever of voter fraud. And what there is evidence is, in some cases leaked memos and leaked emails showing that this is a conscious strategy to disenfranchise working class and people of color. There is a line that's been crossed when politicians start playing those games with the fundamental principles and values of democracy. And these companies that I pay money to, I pay money to DTE as an individual consumer, I'm outraged by the fact that that company would have the gall to use some of the profits that they make off of me and people like me to pay these people to fund their campaigns to undermine our democracy. A line has been crossed and we need to send a clear signal to them, a shot across the bow. This is certainly not a resolution that is going to scare the hell out of them, but it is a signal that we are looking into this, that they have crossed the line and that we're prepared to investigate further and find ways of actually making them pay if they don't withdraw, pull back across the line that they've now crossed. So I thank you, all of you who plan to vote in support of this, I believe it has the support of a majority of you, I certainly hope it does. And we in the labor movement will continue to support organizations that fight for democratic principles in our state and throughout our society. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to give? Anyone else who wishes to give public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, I would move then to Commissioner, follow up to public participation. Any Commissioner follow-up at this time? Commissioner Hodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I wanted to address a couple of the comments that we heard. We heard comments about Ozone House, and in the first part of our meeting during working session, we talked about how in our previous meeting, we discussed additional funds for a set of organizations. And we realized that that document wasn't made public at our last meeting, it was made public recently before this meeting. Ozone House is one of those organizations that's in there when we consider moving forward on that budget amendment at our next meeting. So in this, we've received a number of written public comments too, specifically about that. So I thought it was worth pointing out that go to washtenaw.org/BOC, is that right, Peter? That's where people, yes, that's correct, so go to washtenaw.org/BOC, you can take a look at that document, which includes information about funding to another set of organizations that'll come back up during our conversation at our next meeting. Also wanted to address the people that have joined us to speak in favor of the resolution that was developed in partnership with the Defend Black Voters Coalition and our team here. Very excited that we were able to work together to be able to get this quickly onto our agenda. And Corporation Council was able to work with us on that to make sure it was something that we could move forward on. Peter worked with us and I believe others too. So I'm very grateful for the work of staff to be able to get this so we can move expeditiously. I know that the group is working across the state and working by region. So I'm glad that we're able to have this on here and I'm looking forward to voting yes when we get to that point on the agenda. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner follow-up at this time? Commissioner Morgan?
Sure, just a second to everything Commissioner Hodge said, so I'll be brief, just saying. Absolutely agree on making sure that if we are contracting with vendors that they are not working actively to undermine our democracy. I think that is a fundamental value that we should all share here and would certainly support making sure that we are funding Ozone House, which provides such important services in our community. So I'll leave it there, but thanks, Commissioner, and thank you, Chair.
Any other Commissioner follow-up? Commissioner Sanders?
I agree that Ozone House provides some very needed services to our county residents. I do have a question though, since we've got more representation here. And that is, you know, I'd like to know if you are able to address the recent staff departures and how that may or may not have affected the services that you provide to the residents?
We are not able to engage in the Q and A at this time. You are certainly able to ask those questions and ask for follow-up at a later time, Commissioner, if you would like that.
I would, thank you.
Forgive me, Administrator Dill, you'd raise your hand to be acknowledged.
Yeah, I'll just say quickly, I'll ask my team to make sure that they connect with the Ozone House leadership team that's in the audience so that we can supply the appropriate response to the question that Commissioner Sanders raised.
And Commissioner Sanders, my interjection there was not meant to stifle any other remarks, you still have it for if you want. Okay. Any other Commissioner follow-up at this time? I would just use my own, just to briefly say, I think this will be a unanimous vote in terms of the resolution that's been referenced here tonight. I would take the time to remind anyone listening that we currently, for the next three months, still have a member of Congress, Tim Walberg, who is representing a large geographic portion of the county, who has questioned validity of the election. So you could also contact him and tell him how you feel about that, should you be inclined. Any other Commissioner follow-up at this time? Seeing none, Commissioner Jefferson?
Thank you, Chair, just to say that I agree, this is something that our board needs to recommend to our administration to look into what our vendors are doing with the county dollars that we collect from our residents as taxes. And also with the Ozone House, I have noticed as a resident of Ypsilanti Township that the house on Pearl Street has not been open and that's been a very a good place for children to gather during the day. And I'd like to see that open and the money that we are allocating in our budget. If that's not enough, let us know because we need to have that for our children. I mean, it's been very difficult to watch them just wander and not have nowhere to go. Thank you so much.
Any other Commissioner follow-up at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'd open up to Item Five, which is Liaison Reports. Any Liaison Reports at this time? Commissioner Hodge?
Got a couple, and thank you, Chair, got a couple I didn't want to do during our last meeting, well, I just saw I have a bathroom break. First, I wanted to talk a little bit about what we did at our recent Board of Health meeting. So it was a really good conversation from our Community Voices for Health. They're looking more into the community violence work that the county is engaged in and allocated resources to. I think something that would be of particular interest to the team here is we had a really good presentation about how the Health Department is going forward and executing the use of the ARPA dollars that we've allocated for the health equity work and the other, such as community health workers that's going on there. So we can see if we can get that presentation, everybody else, in case you want to see how that work is being implemented. And then we also had a really great presentation about this Public Health Wins survey. So it's a survey of public health workers across the country and we were able to see where our, how our Public Health Department responses went against other public health departments across the country and what the averages look like. And on average, I think that our Public Health Department staff are fairly happy across most metrics, where staff are not fairly happy, especially relative to the average's compensation, which is something that I'm hoping will be, will move closer to where we need to be with MAG and then any future compensation adjustments that we're able to make going forward. I think those were some of the key highlights, in case I missed anything, I know Commissioner Scott was there too. Oh, but let me keep going with mine, because you know, I got another one I can give. The other one I can give is for Community Action Board, in a Community Action Board, we talked more specifics around HAWK and many of the other, a lot of other work coming out of OCD that we hear frequently about as Commissioners, but the general public and then board members on Community Action Board were able to hear about it. And I expect more engagement from them on a lot of issues, particularly related to housing as we go forward. No, I'm done, thanks.
Thank you. So, Commissioner Beaman?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to give a quick update as we had our final broadband task force meeting. The task force has dissolved as we are rolling out broadband fiber. And I'm just so proud of all of the work that this task force was able to do. I'm so proud of all of us coming together and supporting them and supporting their work, everything from the survey to the grants that we received, to the ARPA dollars, to now we're rolling it out, we're turning things on and We're turning things on in Lodi Township. We've got all the things either on hand or on order for Freedom Township, and it's just really exciting to see all of this come together. So just a huge thank you to everyone, Barb Fuller, Ben Feinman, all of our township leadership that has been involved. Everyone here at the county that has been deeply involved. And I don't know if Commissioner Machewski wants to add anything.
Commissioner Machewski, if you want to add anything, it's your time, sir.
I appreciate, really quick, just to follow up on Commissioner Beeman's comments. I believe at working session, the next working session, we have the Broadband Task Force presenting their final report to us. So that will be, I believe, on the sixteenth of this month. So, thank you.
Commissioner Beeman, anything further? I see Commissioner Schenk, and then I'll go, Commissioner Scott, is your hand up as well?
She, her hand was up before.
Let me, let me go to you then, Commissioner Scott.
That the, that the Public Health Survey, I think, indicated a lot of really powerful things about our, our Health Department and that by and large, they're happy working for the county. But I don't want it to go unsaid that, like most frontline workers, our Health Department is not alone in feeling a significant amount of burnout and moral distress after the past few years. And that is definitely something that Health Department leadership is thinking about how to help people with that and assist them with that. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schenk?
Thank you, and thank you for cheering tonight. I don't think my voice would have made it through even to this point. I serve on the Community Violence Intervention Team along with Administrator Dill and Commissioner Hodge. And our board, of course, has approved the fourteen-point plan that came out of that Violence Intervention Team. I want to invite you on behalf of the team to November's Washtenaw My Brother Keeper Fifty Strong Breakfast that will take place at the Corner Health Center on November 12th at 10:00 a.m. with a special memorial mural unveiling alongside the Community Violence Intervention Team. Everybody is welcome, and I hope that you will come because I think participating in things like that help build relationships and trust that are really incredibly important to doing this work. I think, you know, it's, the trust is going to hold us together as, as we move forward together to save lives. So I hope everybody will come. I will be there, and the mural is going to be beautiful.
Could you repeat that date and time again?
Saturday, November 12th, from 10:00 to 11:30. And when I say all are welcome, I mean all are welcome. So you are all welcome too. And I hope you'll come.
Any other liaison reports at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to item six, Special Order of Business. We have, under item one, a public hearing to receive comment on the amended 2023 through 2025 budget and the recommended 2026 budget. I will declare this public hearing in order. Is there anyone who wishes to give comment at this time on the 2023 amended budget and the 2026 recommended budget? Seeing none, I'll declare the hearing over. And then item two, could I get a motion to set a resolution, for a resolution to set a public hearing to receive comment on Board of Commissioner Compensation Adjustment for Wednesday, November 16th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the Boardroom County Administration Building and via Zoom? Is there a motion? Is there support? Motion made by Commissioner Scott, support by Commissioner Morgan? Voice vote, all those in favor? Forgive me, Counsel, I'm sorry. I skipped discussion, any discussion on that? Seeing none, we'll move to voice vote. Roll call.
Commissioner Beeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Schenk? Item passed.
Thank you. There are no appointments that I'm aware of. We'll move then, could I get somebody to move under item eight, the consent agenda? Support. Move by Commissioner Scott, supported by Commissioner Hodge. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, can we do a voice vote on that, Corp Counsel? Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no? Great. At this time, I'd entertain a motion for the first reading, items A, B, and C. Anyone willing to make that motion? Commissioner Machewski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Under Agenda Item Nine, Resolutions, one, First Reading, A. A resolution approving a grant application for the bipartisan infrastructure law, weatherization assistance program from the Office of Community and Economic Development. B, a resolution to ratify the receipt of a grant from the Flynn Foundation to support the pre-plea diversion program in the amount of $50,000 for the period of January 1, 2023, through December 31st of 2024. And C, a resolution approving and adopting 2023 to 2026 quadrennial county budget.
Is there support? Or? Having been moved and supported, we'll open up for any discussion on all three of these items. Or if somebody wants to pull aside any one specific item for further discussion, happy to entertain that. Any discussion at this time? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to, I believe, voice vote for first reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Okay. I would entertain then a motion on our items under final reading, item A. Commissioner Machewski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move for approval under final reading. A resolution approving a project to expand the Celine Courthouse to make security improvements to the Chelsea Courthouse and to include a Western County Service Center in the space plan from Facilities Management and the District Court.
Is there support? Okay, move by Commissioner Machewski, support by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, I believe we have to do a roll call vote on this.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Schenk? Commissioner Beeman?
Yes.
Item passed.
Great. Move that to item A, under single reading. Could I get someone to move that resolution?
Oh, moved. Move a resolution to ensure accountability of county vendors funding voter suppression.
Good. Move by Commissioner Hodge, support by Commissioner Morgan. Any discussion on this item at this time?
Okay. Commissioner Morgan?
Chair, I, just because we have so many folks here that are rather passionate about this item, as I think we are. No major comments other than absolutely. I think this is certainly something we all value and support. And so without carrying on any longer than necessary, just want to make sure that folks don't feel like our, our lack of discussion is a, a lack of passion for this issue. But thank you all. Thanks, Chair.
Any other comments at this time? I'm not. Seeing none, I would, I would echo what Commissioner Morgan said. I think we need a roll call vote on this one.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Schenk? Commissioner Beeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Item passed.
Always a pleasant surprise when somebody applauds a vote here. So thank, thank. Move to approve of claims. Someone willing to move approval of claims? Is there support?
Support.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Oh, forgive me. I'm in a rush, forgive me. We do need a roll call on that.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Schenk? Commissioner Beeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Item passed.
Thank you. Move to report from the county administrator? No report. Move then to report from the chair of the board. Any items for current or future discussion? Okay, seeing none, any items pending? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, move. Support.
Haven't been moved in support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Listen, oh, we are adjourned.